Okay, this is the Baltimore City Council Judiciary Committee. We are here tonight for Resolution 17-0014R, Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my left by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, 14th District, Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you.
To my far right, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Member of the Committee, and Councilman John Bullock, 9th District, Member of the Committee.
Sure.
To my immediate right is Matt Peters, Staff to the Committee. We are joined by Nina Themelis, representing Mayor Jack Young. We have Rebecca Simmons from the Office of Council President Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you. We are here to talk about the Stormwater Remediation Fee Oversight Committee, or better known as the Stormwater Committee. I've had the honor of chairing this ad hoc committee for the last two and a half years, working with a fantastic group of volunteers. This work builds off of the work that former Councilman Jim Kraft had been leading the charge on. He, as many of you are aware, he retired in 2016. And after Councilman Kraft really twisted my arms, both of them at the same time, I decided to take this work up. First, I want to take a moment to thank the members of the Committee. Shawn Davis, Rupert Denny, Fran Flanagan, Pierce Flanagan, no relation, Adeline Hutchinson, Elizabeth Heilich, former Councilman Jim Kraft, Adam Lindquist, Phil Lee, Dawn Rhodes, Carl Simon, Bonnie Sorak, Josh Sharon, Andrew Forbes, Angela Heron, Jen Iosa, Jesse Hillman. And also want to give a special thank you to Justin Lane from my office, who has staffed this committee for the last two and a half years. I know he's very excited that we are at the finish line to present the report. I'd also like to recognize Peter Auchenclos, a very dear friend of mine, and many of the people in this room. Peter had an untimely passing last year, and Peter was very involved and engaged in this work. And we wouldn't have had a lot of the guidance and direction for this committee if it weren't for Peter. So I'd like to have a quick moment of silence for Peter before we move on. So thank you to Peter and all the committee members for your hard work on this. I'd also like to thank the DPW team. You attended several of our meetings and helped guide our work and provided us a lot of useful information to help us put this report together. Not all of the information we wanted, but a lot of it, and we really appreciate the partnership and working together with the Department of Public Works. So one of the charges of this committee was to come up with a report with findings on the way that we manage stormwater in the city, and to come up with recommendations for DPW and the administration. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fran, who's going to give a brief presentation. There's a slide deck up there. It is also on our colleagues' desk. That summarizes the report. Colleagues, I would ask that we hold questions for Fran and Adam and Elizabeth, who will be prepared to answer any questions we have if we want to get into detail on any of this stuff until after her presentation. And then we'll go over to DPW. I know that Deputy Director Garbark has a statement to make, and they'll be available to answer our questions as well. So with that, Fran, please take it away.
Let's see if we can. Noisy. Good evening. Thank you, Councilman Costello, and members of the City Council. As Councilman Costello just said, we've been working on this for two and a half years, so we're glad to be here, too. And we picked a good day for it, I think. What, first rain for a really long time, it's a good day to be thinking about stormwater. We want to show you this PowerPoint. I think you have copies of it, so I don't know if you want to look at that.
And Fran, forgive me for one second. Colleagues, in the packet for this, you will find the final report, reprinted, so that's going to be on your third page in. And it's not a long read. We intentionally made sure that we got straight to the point. It's five pages, or a little over four pages, and then there's a few appendices with additional information, so please feel free to follow along. Thanks, Fran.
Right. And we, you know, we urge all of you who are interested in this, really, to read the report. We kept it short on purpose because we know you are busy people. And as Eric just said, there are some addendums that I'll refer to as we go through this. And we're not going to take a lot of time on presentation because you can all read, and we want to allow it time for you to ask questions. Let me make sure I've got the right button here. Okay. I think everybody knows that stormwater has been on EPA's mind for quite a while. This is, it's not a new topic. It's not a new source of pollution. And urban areas like Baltimore have big problems with stormwater because historically we have not worried about it too much, not realizing that it was a major contributor to water quality in places like the Baltimore Harbor. Maryland got actively involved with this in, really, before 2012, but in 2012, an important piece of legislation was passed. You see that in your notes, House Bill 987. The city followed with the enactment in 2013 of the Stormwater Remediation Fee. We're going to talk a lot about the fee, its impacts, and some issues that we have seen with it as a committee, in the hopes that some of our recommendations will help the City Council, will help DPW, to be more effective in implementing the stormwater regulations that are on the books. And that entails a lot of outreach with communities, which was a major part of our conversation at our meeting. Okay. The members, the committee was established, as Councilman Costello told you, via a resolution a couple, actually, more than, slightly more than a couple of years ago. It was put together to be representative of the various watersheds in the city, the constituencies, businesses, and nonprofit organizations, and so forth, so that we could accurately and fully represent the citizens of Baltimore as we talked about stormwater and put this report together. And our charge was to look at the stormwater fee, look at the stormwater program that was being implemented, is being implemented by DPW, and make recommendations, as we saw fit, about anything that could perhaps be done better, more of, whatever. And Eric's already told you about who was on, has been on the committee. We met a bunch of times in two and a half years, and we decided, a couple of months ago, that it was time, really, to bring this report to you. Stormwater is a topic you could probably talk about for another couple of years, but we decided we had a good set of recommendations, so we have put them together for you. We reviewed, we reviewed a lot of stormwater programs related to permit requirements, what was, what's happening to meet these different permit requirements. You'll see in the report some of our findings there. We also looked at best practices, land management practices, within the private sector. So what I'm saying is, we did not focus just on DPW. We looked at what the private sectors do, and we looked at what other counties are doing. And we even made reference in some of our meetings to what other cities and states are doing. There's a lot of good examples out there. Everybody has the same sort of issues, and it's good to learn, helpful to learn, from what has worked in other places. We spent some time looking at the DPW's public education and outreach efforts. We discussed the reports with the city staff. City staff was present at, I think, virtually all of our meetings. They provided us with a great deal of good information. And then we heard presentations from external groups as well. Our findings, in brief, are summarized on this slide. We acknowledge, we know, and I'm sure everybody in this room knows, stormwater is hard to manage. The whole program, the whole function of dealing with stormwater is very complex, hard to implement. It's not, not an easy, kind of, snap-your-finger sort of thing. We are recommending that DPW should invite public and legislative oversight and involvement in this effort because we need, the public, and I'm sure the legislature, too, needs to know what is going right, what we need to do more of, where we could improve our efforts, what kind of results we're getting. One of our findings was that the public is really poorly informed about stormwater, even though there have been some public education and outreach efforts. Most people do not understand it, do not know why there's a fee. They don't know what that item is on their water bill. And that, we have a recommendation in our report saying that there needs to be a much more aggressive public education campaign, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. We also found that stormwater, of the various water programs, drinking water, sewage, everybody knows about the sewage, stormwater usually doesn't get as much attention until a street cave's in. And then people really don't understand what caused that to happen, other than that there's a bad pipe. They don't have much understanding, we felt, of the impacts of stormwater on the harbor, for example, the water quality impact. So we have structural, you know, engineering kinds of things, and we have water quality kinds of things that need to be dealt with. We spent some time, I'm forgetting to move this, on the fiscal, we spent a lot of time on the fiscal resources. There is a fee, as you know, the stormwater fee. We wanted to know how much money is being collected, what's it being used for, is it adequate? The goal is to keep water affordable. You know, some people can't afford to pay their water bills now, so we really were, the goal was not to figure out how much more money we should be charging people, it was how to take the existing resources and see if there's not a way to get more out of them. We've tried to also look at the cost, and this was, I guess, a little bit outside our charge, but to look at the cost of the different infrastructure repairs, because, again, it's confusing to the public, drinking water, pipes, sewage, and stormwater. And, you know, that all gets blended together in, I think, in many people's minds, so we tried to pick them apart and understand how much money was being spent on each one, and what the, perhaps what the needs are in each of those areas. And then we wanted to have DPW help us prioritize projects based on maximum amount of pollution reduced for the dollar spent, cost efficiency, and best, well, best bang for the buck, in other words, or is there a better way to get the same amount of improvement, doing it a different way? Hiring somebody different to do the job, designing the job differently, whatever that might be. And we had some excellent presentations on that. Those presentations are available to anybody who would like to look at them, and I'm sure the people who made those presentations would be happy to advise DPW and the Council on details in their reports. We also looked hard at the MS4 permit requirements. Obviously, this can, again, be confusing to the public, probably not to you all, but it was confusing to the public. We were recommending that DPW should report twice a year to the Council on progress in meeting these permit requirements. The MS4 permit is the guiding light, if you will, for water quality in the harbor related to stormwater. And it's, it needs, we need to know, probably on a more frequent basis, how we're doing there. We also recommend, we looked at what other, I mentioned this before, what other communities, cities, counties are doing with regard to getting their money, getting the money to pay for their stormwater project, projects. And we found that some of them are doing pretty well with some different things. This is not in place of, but in addition to the stormwater fee, if we need extra money for that. Fee for service, public-private partnerships, private contractors and nonprofits. We heard from a couple of jurisdictions who are doing a lot of work with contractors, and we found, we think, we believe that we found some very good results there, perhaps more efficiency, perhaps more timeliness, and also nonprofit partners, which we know DPW has used here in Baltimore, and we certainly applaud that. One other thing that we talked about, not in tremendous detail, but that there's an opportunity in Baltimore with the number of vacant lots that are here, and the housing that probably is slated for removal, that there's an opportunity there for in-place remediation in many areas of Baltimore City, if those lots can be turned into stormwater, functioning stormwater approaches with, by the planting of vegetation and various landscaping On the question of public education, which, as I said a moment ago, was, is a major need, we think, in the city, our first thought was to better engage nonprofit partners. You can't do this all yourselves. There's people out there, groups out there, as you all know, some of them are in this room tonight, who can do a, can and are doing a really good job with public education. Let's make sure that they're partners in this effort. The other, the next thing with regard to public education is communication with customers, the people that get the water bills. How are we spending that money? What progress can we show for the dollars that you have contributed via your water bill? We also think that there is a tremendous need for education with regard to impervious surfaces. Those of us who have worked on stormwater for a while, I'm sure, feel like impervious surface, doesn't everybody know what they are? Well, no, they don't. They don't understand the important role that impervious pavement plays in the stormwater problem, and which, of course, is why jurisdictions like Baltimore City have important and major stormwater issues. We've got a highly paved environment. Sometimes that water is caught in a storm drain and supposedly carried to where it is supposed to go. Even when it gets to where it's supposed to go, which is largely Baltimore Harbor, it's creating major problems. So figuring out how to reduce the impact of impervious, prevent stormwater from getting into those pipes, getting into the harbor, there are ways that that can be done, and we think that's a major part of what needs to better happen here in Baltimore. We also had some interesting discussion on the issue of equity. We may or may not be correct about this, but we have the perception that Baltimore County residents who pay a water bill to the city, because it's, we have a common, as you well know, a common water system, that they're paying less than Baltimore County, Baltimore City residents. We didn't have the time or the wherewithal to dig too deeply into that, but there is that perception, and we think it's worth taking a look at. And if there is an issue there, perhaps we need to be engaged more effectively, more than we presently are with Baltimore County, in finding ways to deal with this issue. Sidebar, we did not talk about this, I don't believe, in our committee meetings, but a decade ago, there were many people, some here, who worked with, closely with Baltimore County and Baltimore City, and we developed what we called the City-City Watershed Agreement. That little document ought to be dusted off. There's a lot in there that we feel is still quite relevant to the two jurisdictions and their shared water system. Okay, let's see what is next here. Community engagement, again, I said that this was very important. We heard some good stories from people who came to talk to us, and we heard a couple horror tales about community engagement. We think, we found, and I think this is probably obvious to everybody, there's a lot of opportunity for private property to do work on that property to make itself greener than it already is. And we think that we need to be engaging the community, business community, the citizen community, in making that happen. What individuals do on their lawns, and what businesses do on their property can make a difference. Tree, you know, tree planting, tree management, rain garden, inlet cleaning, rain garden establishment, that kind of thing. We think that people need to be better educated on why these practices are important and how they can be implemented at a small-scale level. We also know that many projects are shovel-ready. There's a lot of work that has been done to figure out what can be done on different properties, and what seems to be holding up implementation of those projects is money. We believe that there are additional dollars besides what is coming from the stormwater fee out there. We heard, for example, from the Chesapeake Bay Trust, who said that we have a, the city has a funding arrangement with them, and they know how to manage grants quite well. They indicated that they turned down about $300,000 worth of projects from Baltimore City for lack of money each year. Our thought is that we should be giving them that money and letting them manage these small grants on behalf of the city. So that's an explicit recommendation in the report. We also, and I've mentioned this before, we also know that there are nonprofits that are doing a whole lot of work, an excellent job, community groups, and churches. We did hear one presentation from a church group, and we found that their problem was getting reimbursed from, by the city for the work that they had done. It took many months for that to happen, and if you're going to engage nonprofit organizations in helping to get the job done, and you promise them that it will be paid for, then it has to be paid for. So we think that there is a real strong need for a lot of work in that arena. Let's go to the next one. Credits and customer service. I just alluded to streamlining the community credit program, and I think that we believe, the committee believed, that we need to improve, or you, DPW, the city, needs to improve the publicity on that program so that our people are aware that if they do certain activities on their home property, on their community property, on their church property, on their business property, they can get credits against their stormwater fee. We feel like that's been talked about so much in recent years, but apparently, there are still many entities that don't quite understand how that works. We think that the customer service function of DPW needs work. We heard stories about people trying to talk to staff on the telephone and having a really difficult time, not getting calls back, not being able to get through to people, people answering the phone and not having the basic information about the project that the caller was inquiring about. Our suggestion, our recommendation in our report is that really, much better training is needed for people who are answering the telephones, wherever they sit in the city government with regard to this stormwater program. They need to, and I doubt if the stormwater program's the only program that that applies to, but they need to be able to answer customers' questions, they need to have accurate information, they know, they need to know where to tell people to go to get better information if they're looking for additional, if they need additional help. Okay. I will just say, in closing, and I hope that you all have some questions, I think we've provided what we think are a pretty practical set of recommendations. We tried not to be too technical. Most of us were not technical experts. We dealt a lot with financial questions. We dealt a lot with public engagement questions, public outreach. I think that it's important for you all to know that we did not come away with a negative feeling. We came away with a sense that more needs to be done, but that should not be taken as negative. We understand that excellent stormwater programs, projects are underway. A lot of people have applied for community credits, a lot of nonprofits are working on this, but the rate at which work is getting done right now is not adequate to meet the MS4 permit. We're not going to get where we need to be. We need to pick up the pace, be more efficient, I suppose, in how that work gets done, better engage our nonprofit partners, do better outreach with communities. We have recommendations in the report, for example, about the kind of information that could be included in the billing. So you don't have to do a whole separate mailing, but put something in the water bill that makes it very clear to people what's going on, why, why there's a problem, what can be done to address that problem, how you can get money to do small-scale and larger-scale projects. So we hope that you will take advantage of these recommendations. We feel like we've finished our work, but I'm sure that the individual members of the committee would be very happy to act as resources to the committee, to the Council, or to DPW, if there's any way that we can help push any of this forward. We will be very disappointed if this goes on a shelf and we don't see any progress in a couple of years, so we really are urging that you pay attention to our little five-page report. Take a look at the addendums. One of the addendums is the report that was done, I think, three years ago, Eric, I think I'm right, the, a previous stormwater committee, whose charge was to provide recommendations on education and community outreach. Our sense was, and we could certainly have missed something here, but our sense was that very little was done with that report. So we felt strongly that we should attach it, bring it to the Council's attention a second time, and urge that the recommendations that are in there get implemented by the Department of Public Works. Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here.
Thank you, Fran. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead, from the 13th District, Member of the Committee, and former Councilman Jim Kraft. Welcome, welcome back, Jim. Colleagues, do you have any questions for the committee?
I have one.
Sure. Councilwoman Clark?
I heard you say that, and I, maybe I misunderstood, and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you so much for your work, by the way, and the presentation. But you were talking about not wanting the water to go, the stormwater, to go into the pipes and into the, and into the harbor, and I was thinking, what, I do, because otherwise they're flooding certain parts of my neighborhoods, the low levels, the places where all the water goes into. And one of the things that I was going to raise this evening is, one of the things that we need to increase, because I know it's important to the Director of Public Works, because he's walked parts of my neighborhood with me, like on 35th Street, over there by Hill and Road, it's just about as low as it gets, and cars float. And the Barkley Street, over by the Pratt Library, Waverly Library, near the farmer's market, across from the farmer's market, that we also have cars that float. And where the Alameda meets Lake Raven, we have cars that float. So I think I misunderstood you, but I want the regular maintenance of all these outlets to be increased, although I know it's a priority already with the Director of Public Works, because he walked the walk and talked the talk, and we've gotten so much help about those outlets in those locations. But it just has to be sustained, because they fill up fast with trash.
Fran, can you grab the mic, just because we're televised, so folks at home won't be able to hear what you're saying?
I hope I didn't misspeak, because you're absolutely right. Of course, the water has to go into the harbor.
Yeah.
We want it to be as clean as possible when it gets there. No trash, no bacteria, no, you know?
Exactly.
And that's the point of these practices that we're urging, and the city, and others are implementing, is to filter the water before it gets to the
Right.
...to the harbor. But, of course, we want to get it off of, and in recent days, we've had some serious flooding instances. I just came back from the beach, and it was really underwater down there. I mean, people are realizing that this water issue is a serious issue.
It is.
So if I said, or implied that, that is not, that is not what we were talking about. We want the water in the harbor, or wherever it's going, obviously.
But you want it to come in, in a better condition.
Right, right, right. I mean, there's a recommendation in the report about street sweeping. We don't want the city to use fee, dollars coming in from the stormwater fee to take the place of money that they were already charged with spending, but we think that more street sweeping would probably be a very good thing, along with more of, a number of other practices.
Wait, so you don't think, but I read the report, or what, what was, yeah, this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I noticed that, I thought you, that the report was saying, don't charge the street sweeping as a stormwater issue.
No.
Oh, on Mr. Ed.
No, no, if we're, again, if we're in more clarity, what we said was, don't take stormwater fee money to replace money that you had in the budget before for street sweeping. Use stormwater fee money for additional street sweeping.
I see. I misunderstood, because we had a huge
Yes.
As Ms. Collins and Councilman Kraft will remember, issue about using, taking some street sweeping issue about using, taking some street sweeping off the general fund and putting it into the water fund. But, so you think it's a good idea, you just don't want to see it?
The money from the fee should be additive. It should be, it should be increasing the pot of money that's available for practices like street sweeping. We didn't see it as something that was gonna take the place of already budgeted.
Street sweeping.
Yeah.
And that was, that was the argument we had at the time, although since it was initiated, actually, they had, they started this citywide, sweeping everybody's neighborhood kind of, kind of project. So maybe we did get a direct stormwater benefit from it, but it was a big debatable point, as you'll remember, oh yes, about that whole issue. So it's good to see it raised again and to take another look at that, but thank you.
But our point in the report is that street sweeping's a good practice. We don't have any problem with street sweeping, you know, we just.
Unless they push all the trash down, unless it pushes all the trash down the storm drains and then when they get to the harbor.
That's not what happens, ladies. I didn't think so.
If I could, if I could build upon this and say, we did hear from DPW that, that basically all of the remediation cannot be done on public property, right? There's not enough public property to fully meet the permit. So therefore, some remediation has to happen on private citizens' property, on businesses, on church property, et cetera. And that's why the focus on community engagement is so important, because, and the community's understanding of the fee, especially if there's an attempt to raise the fee, so because, because of the importance of their involvement on their own property, right? So if you say to a citizen, we're gonna raise the stormwater fee, and they see it on their bill with the other, you know, the other water costs that are also increasing, there's going to be, there could be backlash, right? They're like, you're raising all these rates, I don't understand, what is it being used for? And that's why we felt the importance of public education and engagement. And, and so, you know, helping the community understand that, that these are connected, right? Like the street sweeping is one part, the rain garden you see on your, on the church property is another part, you know, these different, these different acts are all tied into this, and this is how the fee is being used. Like helping them see that connection, and that's why the community grant program we thought was pretty powerful, because it does allow citizens to be directly engaged in these projects, right? And so they not only get that connection, they like see the actual benefit of it in their community, right? So it's not, you know, it's not just a truck coming by, it's, it's very direct in there, they're, they're part of the work, right? So while, you know, we commend the, like, the work that's already being happened to involve the nonprofit organizations and the church communities, like, we feel like there's a kind of a, you get a twofer, you know, you get a double win there, right? You get the win of the project being installed, but then you also get the win of the community engagement and understanding of it, so that they can, you know, when the fee does have to be increased, they're like, okay, I get it, this makes sense, it's gonna help, it's helping my community in some way.
I do have another question. If I, if I may ask one more question, I'll probably have more. We lived through a lot in this chamber when that fee was imposed, because mainly people out in the counties that were getting hit with it, the other subdivisions that were picked to have this, started calling it the rain tax. So then that spread very quickly until it just became mocked as a useful tool. And we're still recovering from that. But when you see cars floating in the neighborhoods you represent, you understand very well what it's about. But my question is this, this stormwater fee is a dedicated fee, like the water, like the sewage, is dedicated, a dedicated fund. But it's fairly newer, and I'm thinking, and I know you've looked into this, and I don't know the answer. I'm thinking that collecting that fee has to raise to a certain level before we can begin borrowing against it for capital programs. And I just wonder what the status is of that capital, the ability to begin to really do capital projects, whether we do them with, in partnership with nonprofits and neighborhoods, or whether we do them as the city itself. And I know, are we gonna hear from the associate director? So perhaps when you speak, you might, you might address that, because I'd like to know what the status is of, of the enterprise fund in terms of being able to do some capital projects and even do them in partnership with neighborhoods. Now, then they'll pay attention when there's real money available and not just a waiver of monthly fee. People hate the fee, but if that's the reward, if not paying it is the reward for doing certain projects, then it begins to look small. Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one quick question. In the recommendation related to fiscal resources letter C, it says, DPW should continuously evaluate whether the practices funded by the stormwater remediation fee achieve maximum pollutant reduction and co-benefits for dollars spent. Was a part of the process evaluating currently how, because we were talking about street sweeping, how DPW currently operates its street sweeping program? Not, not, I mean, obviously, street sweeping is a good process that we want, but could we do better as an agency in how we actually, you know, you know, operate the street sweeping? To me, it seems like there's some inconsistencies in our program and.
I think that's probably an excellent question. We did not get that.
Use the microphone. Use the microphone.
We didn't get to that level of detail, but it's, it's a good question, and you could probably ask the same question about other practices, because our point in that recommendation that you were quoting is, we need to make sure that if we spend a dollar on this, we're getting a dollar's worth of water quality benefit.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
May I make a comment on that?
Please.
I think there are two street sweeping projects. One is the required one, where if you don't move your car from your street on the days and hours posted, you're gonna get towed, and it seems to be very reliable. Then there's the voluntary program, where people voluntarily move their cars on opposite sides of their streets. And I think it's, well, two things happen. The machines break down all the time, the sweepers. I don't know, maybe we should spend our money on better, a better quality of, of those machines, the equipment. And I'm, I'm not being facetious, they do, they break down. I don't hear about that so much from the post, I don't know if it's different sweepers or not, that go to the, the legal sweeping areas or to the volunteer. But in any event, and the other thing is that some streets are just not possible to sweep. If it's all streets, it's, mine's not possible to sweep, because we would get tickets if we moved from the one side where we're allowed to park to the side where we're not. We've been told that we would get tickets, we can't do it. So there are lots of one-way streets like that in Baltimore. So they're not covered, and that's fine, because we don't want to be moving our cars back and forth like that, but if we can avoid it. But basically, that program needs another look in case we're just fruitlessly sending people out to try to do routes that practically are not clean, are not cleared for that to happen.
Deputy Director Garbark, if you would, wouldn't mind introducing your team as well.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Garbark. I'm deputy director of Department of Public Works. I'm joined by my colleagues, Kim Grove, who is the chief of the DPW Office of Compliance and Laboratories, our very own Ms. Collins, as everyone I'm sure knows, and Janelle Bartlett-Mummy, who is working for Ms. Collins in the legislative office at DPW. I want to thank you for having this committee hearing. I want to thank you for the opportunity for speaking, and I want to thank the Stormwater Committee, because this is certainly a, a very tough and important subject, and I really appreciate their engagement and, and all the work that has been put on this, because this is a thorny issue. It's, unfortunately, is a very technical issue. It requires a lot of engineering, a lot of technical scientific analysis, and unfortunately, as Councilwoman, you mentioned, it, it sort of got pulled into a political realm, you know, a few years ago, and it, and it kind of confused the situation a lot and kind of conflated a whole lot of things. But we, we're very proud of what we've been able to do with DPW. Obviously, we wish we could do more. Our program, as, as was mentioned, was enabled in 2012. The fee was established in 2013. What we have now, we've able to double our operational spending to ensure cleaner streets, healthier waterways, and a comprehensive management system. We have 141 full-time positions, including 36 street sweeping drivers as well, and those positions work in our stormwater compliance in our other areas, that we're able to fund for that, to, to look at that and maintain and ensure that we have clean waterways. This has also allowed us to enhance our plan reviews, helped us enhance our inspections of properties, of developments, in tracking pollution source, and in communications and in looking at utility maintenance, to know what's out there, where they are, and whether or not they need to be replaced. I do want to address that the issue of public engagement and public communication is always something that's very, very important, and as much as we like to do a lot and as much as we say we do a lot, there's always more that can be done. Because every time, you know, people just, just are not necessarily paying attention to the information that we're providing, when we're providing it, I think that was mentioned, unless there's a disaster of some sort, that's when people sort of look at it. And we're also faced with the issue that I'm sure everyone is in the city and elsewhere is faced with, is, is we have a very younger digital population that is looking at a certain type of marketing, and, and we have another population that isn't, who is looking for more traditional means of marketing. But both of those populations pay this fee, and both of them need to be under, you know, we need to be able to communicate with, with everyone about what this does and what this means. To, Councilwoman Clark, to your point, we have set aside some money in the, in the account to allow it to build up so that we can leverage bonds. And last year, we were able to issue our first utility revenue bonds. That has gotten us about $60 million in financing. So we had those to, to, been able to leverage those, those separate bonds. The capital program implementation was delayed, as was every other jurisdiction, because of, of other issues that, it's just a brand-new program statewide. But Baltimore City was the only large Phase 1 jurisdiction to meet the restoration requirements of the current permit without any modification and engaging in pollution trading, or, or we were, we didn't have to engage in that, and we didn't have to enter into a consent decree. So we're one of the leading entities statewide in this. In fact, I think we are the leading. Okay.
Climate. Yes.
Yes, yes. So we've made great strides in improving the water quality. There's, of course, more work that needs to be done. We are looking, I think that the number that was told to me earlier was $5 billion. That is the total cost of replacement of our stormwater sewer system. The, the storm drains, all of that stuff is, would be about $5 billion to fully replace all of that. That's obviously nowhere near what we have now. And that's just not something that we all need to be concerned about necessarily, but it's something that we need to be mindful of. This stuff starts to fail. You know, we're focused on the water, the wastewater pipes, and then there's the stormwater system. The stormwater system is just as large as our wastewater system. And so that's something that is really out there that we're mindful of, and that's something that we are gonna have to, you know, begin thinking about at some point. But, but this is something we're very proud of, of all the stuff we've been able to accomplish so far, the different programs. One of the other programs that this fund helps to fund, and something we're very proud of, is the YH2O program. What that does is that brings in youth in the city of Baltimore and engages them in all aspects of the Baltimore City utility operations. And I believe we have 100% placement afterwards for full-time jobs, whether they're at DPW or with our partnering contractors, and we've used this fund to help pay for some of that. And that has also helped with engaging younger folks to teach them about the, the stormwater program and the reason for all of that. I think that's, was there any other questions that I was supposed to answer or anything? Or, did I answer your question, Councilwoman?
Let me just ask a question.
Certainly.
About what you said.
Yes, ma'am.
I lost the continuity, and maybe I wasn't listening carefully, but you were, you've accumulated enough set aside to generate $60 million in funding.
Yes.
And you're, but that's oper, but you're using it operationally, I'm not.
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Grove, who was our expert on that.
Okay. In other words, that's great, and it sounds like you're doing good things with it, if it's operational. But I, I was thinking also about, what about the capital where, like the other funds use to fund so many of the things we're doing? Are we just, are we using it initially just for operations, and then as it gets higher, we'll do both, or what are we doing?
Happy to answer that. So, good evening. My name is Kim Grove, and I'm with the Department of Public Works. I'm the chief of the Office of Compliance and Laboratories. I also serve as the liaison to MDE for the city for our MS4 permit. For those of you who, I'll apologize right now if I use too many acronyms, but MS4 is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Permit.
You know MS4.
Great. To answer your question, so since the fee was enacted in 2013, we have averaged collections between $27 and $29 million per year. And since 2016, thanks to state legislature, we are actually required to put an annual report of not only how much revenue we collect from the fee, but how we spend it, related to these six categories of allowed uses of the fee. To come back to your answer, to your question, though, is, on average, annually, we spend about $18 million of that in operations and maintenance. That is supporting all of the positions that the deputy director talked about, as well as the other technical resources that are needed related to that, and a, and funding a $200,000 per year grant program that is administered by the Chesapeake Bay Trust. The rest of that amount has accumulated into reserve. It has been used as part of our capital improvement program, and initially, we had used a large portion of that as Pago with only a little bit of debt service. That $60 million is the amount of total financing that we have as a collection of revenue bonds, WFIYA, which is the Water Innovation Funding.
Financing.
Financing, and Implementation Act. That is a national funding source. We have also engaged with an innovative funding source known as the Environmental Impact Bond Program, and we are one of the first MS4 jurisdictions to engage in that. Other jurisdictions have mostly used them for their combined or system projects. And then finally, we, because we have had a sustainable funding source and that we have demonstrated that the revenue has been coming in, we have been able to take advantage of the state's State Revolving Loan Fund, which is a low-interest loan. So even if we had all those bonds, the SRF or the State Revolving Fund is actually the most attractive as a debt service mechanism. Combine all of those together, and we have over $60 million in financing that we then will have to pay off, but that still allows us to be able to implement capital improvement projects without having to use all the money as cash right away. And so it allows us to, 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 And so, it allows us to control some of the costs that we pay, pass on to our ratepayers. Did that help?
Yeah, it's very helpful. Thank you, thank you.
Yes. And I, you know, just to add to that, I think, you know, we've seen some of the, the true costs, the catastrophic costs of stormwater, especially in Ellicott City, but even here in Baltimore. Frederick Avenue, for instance, was washed out, and that sort of is a very clear vivid picture of the destructive force that, that, that this stormwater can, can cause if it's not treated or, or channeled appropriately. So, that's the stuff we're very, very mindful of. That's one of the reasons why in the most recent rate increase, which was obviously not very popular, but that was the first stormwater rate increase since we put it in, was this past year. So, that was the first time we increased the stormwater rate, as well as the consumption rate for water.
Matt, can I jump back to Kim for a second?
Certainly.
So, we, so the council authorized the issuance of up to $202 million in bonds for stormwater, I think, last year, maybe?
Yes.
If my memory serves me correctly. So, is that, is that $60 million, is that, does that count against that $202 million, or is, is there just a portion of that $60 million? Because you mentioned other bond funding sources.
It's a portion. Unfortunately, in my head, I don't have them all portioned out, you know, I can't tell you exactly which portion is which, but this, the, it's a portion of that $202 million that we're going to have. I want to say it's a little bit less than $10 million for the currently appropriated capital improvement projects as of fiscal year '20.
So, if it's 10, that, that means we still have the capacity to issue another 190 million in bonds?
Yes.
Do we have a sense of the timeframe for when the next tranche of bonds would be issued?
Not at this time, no. I don't, I think we would have to check with our...
We'd be talking at least a year out, right? Multiple years out?
Yeah, it would have to be that much.
Yeah, we can get you more information on that.
Okay.
But it's usually a year, two years.
Okay.
Yeah, at least.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Garbark, you mentioned a program, I never heard of, but it sounds like a very successful one called the YH2O.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have 100% job placement record?
Mm-hmm.
How many people are in it, three?
No, quite a few. A few dozen of them.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it's a very successful program.
Where have you been all your lives?
Councilwoman, I think you, you might be confusing it, because you've been to some of the graduations, so it's about...
Right.
The seventeen, about seventeen, eighteen young people.
Yes.
I've never missed one.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's the same program.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You've been a very good supporter.
I didn't know it was called that.
Yes.
I just thought it was...
Amazing.
Oh, it's a one, oh, it's just, no, it's a, let me just say, because people are listening, maybe they are, my husband's probably watching. Where is she today? So, basically, this is a wonderful program, it should be a model for the whole city of Baltimore, and I always say that. Here are all these, first of all, handsomest-looking men and lovely women, they've gotten more and more women as the different classes came in and graduate, who come in to learn different aspects of, of being involved in, in water engineering mainly, but also budgeting, all the different aspects that go into it. My father was a water, wastewater engineer, so you see, I warmed the subject. And so, basically, they go through this mentoring program and, and actual work, and different aspects of the whole thing, and then they have this wonderful graduation across the hall from here, in some of the best-looking suits and everything I ever saw, and families come, and I, a lot of us always come, and then they have jobs, and it's not just with the city. These partner engineering people, there's a society that's a partner in this effort, they hire, their people hire all kinds of our graduates.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's a very success, there's not a person that graduates that doesn't have a job that I have ever seen in any of the, the annual or six-month graduation ceremonies.
That's correct. And this year, the Department of Public Works Employee of the Year, out of all 3,000, over 3,000 employees, was a graduate of the very first class of that. So, it really is a testament to how good that program is.
Wow.
And we were very proud of that ourselves, so. It's a good program that, you know, we're very happy was able to provide support through this fund and other things.
Great program. I wish that I knew more kids who wanted to be engineers, but a lot of them don't even know what engineers do. But these young people came in like that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, and they all have jobs in one aspect or another. It's a great program, thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And within the recommendations, especially under number two MS4 permit requirements, it mentions the fact that DPW should investigate various successful approaches, but then it calls out specifically, including the use of private contractors and nonprofit partners. Is that because we currently don't have enough workers within water and wastewater to address or to, to, to help us meet the remediation goals?
Are you asking, me or the...
Well, I don't, we'll go to Fran. Fran, you could just, Fran, just make sure you grab the, the mic. No problem.
We heard presentations from a couple of other jurisdictions that had very good success with private contractors, in terms of cost, ability to get the job done, timing of projects and so forth, and I guess, perhaps incorrectly, but I think we just had the impression that the city, using its own employees, was limited in how fast work could get done. So, that was part of the recommendation. I, I think the nonprofit part is, is fairly obvious, that we have nonprofit partners in the city, churches and organizations like Blue Water Baltimore and the Waterfront Partnership and so forth, who can get a lot of tree planting and other things like that done, and why not let them do it as opposed to, you know, spending city employee time doing that kind of thing? So, and I don't think that was meant to be negative, it's meant to just say...
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, you'll probably understand better with my next question. It wasn't negative for me.
Okay, good, I just didn't want you to think we, I didn't want to leave a negative impression about me.
No, it was, for me, it was more connected to the program that you just mentioned, the YH2O program. And my question would be, if we could utilize these resources in order to support that program, is it, is, is there the potential for us to embed a program like that in one of the local high schools, where we do vocational training, and maybe have a year-round program where a student chooses a high school, because it is attract to get into this type of work in DPW? I, I think, I mean, if we're celebrating 17 graduates, I think, you know, the potential is unlimited, the number of young people we could get into these positions.
I can only speak for myself, because we didn't make a recommendation, but that sounds like a fabulous idea to me, you guys.
I'll just add, we did not, we were not briefed about the Y2, H2O program, so, this is the first I'm learning about it, and it does sound great, but we did not explore that as a idea, yeah.
DPW, do you want, do you want to take a stab at that?
Even shorter than Fran's. Hi, so, for the large capital projects, they are designed and constructed by firms that are pre-qualified and contracted through the city. I think some of what they were talking about is that there are other jurisdictions, such as Prince George's County, that has engaged in a public-private partnership. We're still keeping our eye on that, to see how it is working, not only through implementation, but also through the maintenance phase. And then Anne Rondell County has a pay-for-performance program where a private property owner and a private entity make a proposal, saying we can get X done by so many dollars, and then they have to provide that performance. Again, we are keeping an eye on that. We want to definitely get most bang for our buck, but we also want to make sure that these public funds are being used and are not sidestepping certain other labor and hiring and fairness-type roles that are in place for a very good reason for using public funding. So, we're keeping an eye on that, we're seeing how well it works. We're also seeing how applicable it can be. Some of our projects that we've installed, what we have noticed is, we're not the suburbs, surprise. So, some things that have worked out in the counties, such as Carroll County has been able to convert large ponds into sand filters, and they've got the right soils for that, they've got the right interception of the water to make that work, and so their costs for pollutant removal, or their cost-effectiveness, is amazing. We're not seeing that so much here in the city, so it's a little hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison with what the other counties are doing. But we're still trying to have a wide portfolio of projects, programs, and partnerships that will allow us to meet our overall goals for stormwater management.
Okay. So, is there, based upon the fact that we could use these funds for the YH2O program, is there anything that would prevent us from being able to use them to embed a program within high schools to prepare young people for a career in...
I don't, I don't know if there's anything that is preventing. I think it's something that we would want to investigate further, and because stormwater is not the only utility that is funding this program, yeah, we would want to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think if there's opportunities to create, what, one, create a pipeline for Department of Public Works water and wastewater, but then also give young people who may not go to, or want to go to college, a career path that, at the same time, fills a need within our city, I just think we, I just think we should explore it. I mean, I know that sometimes our vocational programs probably are some of the most successful, when you look at schools like Mervo and, and other schools like that, so why not try to create another trade that they presently might not have?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, especially at Mervo.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? So, so, here's what I'd like to do, because we, and Fran, you mentioned, we had the SWAC report, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, which was the previous iteration of this. We did have a report, and a lot of those recommendations, good recommendations, were still outstanding, you know, while we did this work. So, I think what I'd like to do is have DPW come back, say, next summer, to report back on the status of all of these recommendations, to provide something in writing, and come back and testify in front of the council, and I'd like to turn this into something that we're going to, we're going to look at on a semi-annual basis. I recognize that the committee's recommendation was semi-annual, and, but let's, let's do this sometime in, in maybe May or June, that'll give you a couple extra months, just for the first one, to look through this and figure out, you know, which of the recommendations you agree with. At that hearing, I'd like an update for the committee, or for the council as a whole, on each of these things. Anything that you don't agree with? I recognize that these are non-binding recommendations, these are, this is not an ordinance, this is not dictating that you shall do these things, but we also have an expectation that you are going to take it seriously, as I, I know you will, and provide reasonable justification for what, what you are not able to do, and what you are able to do in place of that. To the committee members, does that seem like a reasonable course of action? Is there anything you want to...
Sounds excellent.
Okay. So, thank you all very much for your work, Fran, Adam, Elizabeth, Jim, thank you, and Justin, of course. Colleagues, is there a motion to, we have four committee members, is there a motion...
Before that, I think, Marcia, did you want to...
Just for, we were ready in case it came up, but what we wanted to leave you, leave the committee with, just for some additional information, we have a couple handouts. One is a glossary of terms that we have presented in the past, it's been updated, so that any of the other materials that you see, you can understand the language that we use. Another one is a map that we have developed that shows where we have, the locations of projects that we have awarded grants to, and how that relates to a prioritization map that we have developed related to socioeconomic and racial equity. There is also a graph showing a comparison of our best management practices and the long-term costs, and why street sweeping is still viewed as being cost-effective, and on the back of that is how the pollutant removals relate to the different practices that are there. So, this is just something for your reference as you are looking through this.
Thank you. We will only accept those materials electronically.
Okay, fantastic.
I'll, I'll take paper.
Except for, I, I will only take those electronically, if you have paper for the councilwomen. Thank you. Trying to...
There's no ransomware attacks on pieces of paper.
Cut, cut down on how much you all have to recycle. DPW, you're good? We're good? Thank, thank you very much for being here and participating and taking this seriously and being a real partner in this. Colleagues, is there a motion to move this resolution favorably?
Second.
Motion by Snead, second by Clark. Costello, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Snead?
Yes.
Motion carries, this moves to second reader on October 28th. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Great report. Thank you.